All right. We'll call our work session meeting to order if we would. That stands for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under power, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind. Moment of silence, please. Let us bear our heads. Okay. For the sake of business, we'll discuss the fire tax. What can be used and so forth, the explanation of that. Mr. Carter?
I'd be glad to lead into that, Mr. Chairman. Since implementing the fire tax this past year, we have been trying to fine tune that as we've went along. And this year, we have started requesting additional information. We're starting to look deeper into some of these expenditures and trying to compare those to what was initially discussed to help implement versus some things that may just come about. And I think that you've had a couple of examples over the last fiscal year of requests for uses of some of the reserve funds, I guess, as I'll put it that way. So during the budgeting session, Commissioner Bobby Irwin and Commissioner Bill Osburn, we talked about this and trying to bring into perspective more understanding and detail of what permissible uses for that fire tax could be. So we've had communication with Daniel Rotten, and Daniel, I believe, has some information to share with us that may provide some blueprint for what we're looking at. And I hope that that'll open the door to where we can expand on that conversation and identify uses that are permissible under such. So not to put you on the spot, Daniel, but it's all yours.
All mine. So I think some of you have met Jamie Foer. He's our Office of State Fire Marshal representative that inspects the fire departments. And I've been in contact with him some, and we've kind of going back and forth. And I think because of the holiday, I've had a hard time getting a hold of him. But he was going to provide me with updated list, equipment list, that's what they look for when they come around to do the inspections of the fire department. I have not been able to get my hands on that yet. Like I say, I haven't got a hold of him. Previous iterations of that list, Eric, but it basically specified the equipment that had to be on a fire truck. Hoes, axes, pipe poles, air packs, generators, things of that nature, for each engine to qualify to get maximum points towards that fire department's rating. That's pretty much what their list is, what it entails. I think they specified each department, each member of a department must carry a paging device. Doesn't say anything about radios. They specify that the building has to be heated. Doesn't say anything about air conditioning. So that list is pretty small, and I'm going to get my hands on it and get you guys a copy of it as soon as I can. My concern is that if we only look at the things that are absolutely required, we're not going to be outfitting the fire department. An example of that would be that the OSFM requires an air pack for every man on that fire truck. Doesn't say anything about how often that pack's supposed to be tested. That's NFPA standard.
The insurance standard.
That's right. The National, yeah.
Right.
I mean, ISO has a set of standards, and that's what DOI is using. And then there's also an NFPA guideline. You know, there's a lot of other things, truck maintenance, that we all know is common sense, but it's not on a list somewhere. Yes, sir?
Well, I just wanted to interject. The insurance says the tires can't be over 10 years old.
NFPA guideline, I think, too.
Right. Because of the dry rot issue.
Right.
Which Piney Creek found out on their own. There's so many daggone things that come in on the periphery, it's unbelievable.
So one of the things I'm trying to work on is getting the required equipment list together, trying to kind of meld that with the NFPA's suggested guidelines. Now NFPA is not necessarily an in stone law.
What does NFTA stand for?
NFPA, National Firefighters, oh, Lord, National Fire Prevention Association.
What about APOC? Where does it come in?
I don't honestly know. That one I'm not familiar with.
The list that the state puts out doesn't include all the necessary tools to run a fire department.
No, it doesn't. It only thing, it specifies what has to be on that truck to get maximum insurance credit towards their district rating, so.
Then there's variables, because you can use a radio as a pager.
Can. Say again, that list specifies a pager, but what good is a pager, just a pager?
If you can't talk.
If you can't talk. So, you know, that's got to be some consideration, too. And what about the maintenance of that equipment? Again, there's a lot of things to be seen there that we didn't have to be accounted for, and I'm not sure the best way to go about doing that.
Are there any questions?
I don't, I don't know that, I know that I'm not qualified to say what can be, what the money can be used for. At some point, I think we need to have the fire chiefs from each fire department come in and sit down and say, yes, we need this to fight a fire, no, we don't need this to fight a fire, to be, to have our certification, to have our proper insurance or whatever. I thought that was going to happen before we had this discussion, but maybe this discussion needs to come first, leading to people who actually fight the fires.
I think at some point, we're going to have to have a discussion, like you mentioned, where the fire departments or their representatives come together with you guys to sit down at a table and establish the difference between what this piece of paper says that I have to have for insurance requirements, and what does it actually take to go out in the world and fight a fire?
When, back when we first started talking about the fire tax, I think we had two or maybe three district meetings with the different fire departments, and COVID hit us, and we didn't have all the, all the fire departments. But at every meeting that we went to, the general public that was there said they wanted accountability as to how the money was being spent. I'm not here to micromanage a fire department, but when I look at the, at some of the expenses that were turned in, red flags go up automatically to me when I see taxpayers' money being spent on things that I don't understand. Now, some of those questions have been answered, and I agree that it was a legitimate expense. There was quite a few that I still can't justify how that was spent to run a, to fight a fire, to run a fire department. That's what I'm after is accountability. We've taxed the citizens of the county. Some of them had a seven cent increase, and I want to see those fire departments have the best equipment that they can get to fight those fires. That's why I'm more anxious to hear, I'd like to hear from the list, see the list that you're looking for, but also I'd like to hear from the fire chiefs.
Well, I think we're all, I agree with Bobby everywhere you went was accountability, and that's, that's just the way it's got to be. But I think, too, that at each department, we've got other levels of accountability in there. These board directors are sitting on these fire departments, and each department has one, is tasked with spending that money, approving the expenditures in these fire departments. I think that's another good level we've got to look at, that they're, they're doing their jobs of okaying those expenditures. Those are the guys that know what spanner wrenches and pipe poles and heated wires and all this stuff is all about, to approve those expenditures. You know, I think, I think we need to, there's a level there that we've kind of been overlooking, or that may not be the right word, but sidestepping, there's a level of protection there that's built into this whole thing from the boards. You know, I sit on Piney Creek, and we don't spend money unnecessarily. You know, if something's broke, of course, we're going to fix it, and if it's got And if it's got some life left in it, we're going to use it. And going back to John, the 10-year deal on the tires. I mean, that's, we had perfectly good-looking tires. You know, I'd run them on my truck, I guess, but I don't drive a fire truck. But we went and got new tires. And that's pretty major investment nowadays. And I do, I think our boards out here in these departments will offer us some protection. My other question, I guess, goes, if there's illegal activity or illegal expenditures, would the audit pick up on that when we do an audit? I know there's different levels of audits, but.
I think it comes down to what the definition of illegal is. You know, an audit firm is going to look at the expenditures, and they're going to account for those expenditures. They're not necessarily going to red flag certain lines within those expenditures because they deem them to be illegal. They will identify them. But I do not think that you'll find, at least on, on the, what I would call a regular audit schedule, you won't find that type of identification.
I look seriously towards our, our boards in a lot of that direction for making sure this is spent. And you're in the fire department. How do you, not putting you on the spot, but how do you look at that? How do you view that?
I think my only experience is with part of fire department. That's where I'm a member at. You know, you mentioned having some accountability. We have accountability there. Every check has to have two signatures on it. And I think once a purchase reaches a certain number, it has to be, actually go to the board. And I can speak for them and say that they don't spend money unnecessarily. I don't know what happens at other places. But from what I gather, every department member from any department I have talked to is interested in using that taxpayer money the best way that they can. They all appreciate it. I've heard that over and over and over again. How many, you know, how, how great it's been for the fire departments to not have to go peel potatoes every weekend to make it, to put gas in trucks. And they know that. And so overwhelmingly, what I've been hearing is that they want to make sure they're spending the money correctly. I also understand the public's view, that they want to make sure their money's being spent correctly, as well they should. That's why I think there has to be some discussion between you guys and the fire commission or chiefs, or however that's going to work, to come to a, to a common ground.
You know, Mr. Chairman, one of the things that strikes me, and I just brought up the tires over 10 years old with the Piney Creek as an example. Looking at a tire, you may not know that it's dry rotted. That's why they came in with the 10-year limit on the tires. Now, we can look, and as an outsider looking in and not a firefighter, if a fire department goes and they buy an ice machine, to us, it's frivolous. But if you're out fighting a fire, that 90-degree weather, it's not frivolous. Whenever you've got all that turnout gear and everything else on, that, that ice water tastes pretty doggone good. Same thing if, if it's in the middle of the winter. That coffee maker may look frivolous to us and not being used, but I can remember that fire in 2017, 17, up here across from the Wilkes Community up there. Whenever that house burned down, it was 17 degrees. There was ice two foot thick running across the road. Well, you don't get a break whenever you're fighting fire. You may saddle up to it to get a little warmth, but you know, a cup of coffee, it tastes pretty good at that time. And I don't think our citizens would object to that. But we've got to have a mechanism to make sure that we know what's going on, and we can explain it to the citizens whenever they bring it up to us. And if a, if a board, if they say, okay, we're going to pay, we're going to pay for this, that's up to them, but don't take it out of fire tax money if it looks bad. Take it out of your, the money that you raise. And we've got to have a mechanism where that, we show where that comes out of the money that's raised. So the only way that I know to do that is two separate accounts.
That's, that's in the making, in the works. Now, I said the last commissioners, fire commission meeting to set up two accounts to identify the fire tax money.
Works for me. I think it's a simple way.
That, that is to establish a fire tax fund account, and then a donations or whatever account.
That's, that's, that's the process. That's what we, we've got ours in place. Tried to encourage everybody to start that off July 1, because that's the new fiscal year, you know? So where they've all got it done, I don't know. We got a meeting this month. But that was the process to keep the donated money separated from the, from the fire tax money.
I think that's a simple solution.
I know that we're Allegheny's a volunteer fire department, but a lot of cities and a lot of counties have paid fire departments. Now, those paid fire departments, I'm sure they have a schedule of what equipment it costs to go into a building to, to fund, to fund that fire department, whether it be ice machines, which I would have no problem with, whether it be a coffee machine, which I would have no problem with. But I'm sure some plates, there's a list. When, when Charlotte builds a new fire station, they know they have to have X number of this, 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 and this to run that fire department. That's why I was interested in, in a list that would say, this is what you need. But there again, I go back to the fire chiefs. They're the people on the ground that are fighting these fires, whether it's hot weather, whether it's cold weather, whether it's 2 o'clock in the morning or 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
Actually, we've got one right now. I just got a text message.
They know what it takes. And I, I don't think we're looking for a list of what you can't spend. We're looking for a list of what you can spend. And after that, you know, you, I don't know how they would justify something else. I've never seen a copy of a fire, fire department's 501(c)(3) C agendas, their, their rules and regulations.
And bylaws.
I don't know if they're all the same or if everyone's different. You know, you've got five different fire departments. You might have five different.
They may not be identical, but they should be pretty much in line with each other. You know, the wording might be a little different, but. We want to get meeting together with the fire. What do we want to pursue here? We want to get a meeting lined up with, when Daniel gets his list, and get a meeting together, what's consensus of the board to sit down and have a conversation with the fire chiefs.
If I may, at one time, it was discussed that the finance committee would sit down with each fire chief and their bookkeeper or whoever they chose, go through all five. Then after that, have one mass meeting where all the commissioners are together. The finance committee's got their questions. The rest of the board can ask their questions. And you've got all the fire chiefs here to bounce off of each other. But there's, you know, if we tried to go through all five at one meeting, you're probably looking at hours and hours and hours. That's just what I thought was going to happen a few weeks ago or a few months ago.
Either way, we want to pursue it. But I don't want us to get into micromanaging. I think, I think our boards is out there, and our chiefs are out there. But for the taxpayer side, we need, we need oversight. But at the same time, the firemen, they, they got to have a little bit of leeway. I mean, they're, they're out here. They're not blessed with great numbers of volunteers nowadays, so.
Just because you come up with the list this year doesn't mean you can't change it for next year.
That's right.
You know, you go along, you see, well, wait a minute. We do need this. Then let's add it to it. Or you see something, you don't need it, let's take it out. It's not set in stone.
No, that's right. Things change as time goes along. So what's, what's consensus here? What's the board feel like we need to do?
I think a fire commission, joint meeting between the fire commissioners, fire commission and the commissioners would be called for.
Joint meeting with the fire commission and the commissioners?
That would be fine, but I would still like the finance committee to meet individually with each fire chief to go through the, the statements that they turned in, the general ledger sheets.
You talking about the ledger sheets that they turned in?
Just explain, because like I said, I, some things I said no right away. As soon as one of the fire chiefs said something, I said, well, yeah, that makes sense. But I think, you know, some of those are 15 or 20 pages long.
Yeah.
And if you try to go through each and every one of those, you know, it's going to take time. I, I have no problem with the fire commissioners and commissioners, commissioners meeting, but I'd also move that have a consensus vote for the finance committee to go through.
Everybody in agreement with the finance committee?
To me, the finance committee's doing that during the budget process. That's the logical time, whenever it be done, whenever they submit that. Y'all can look over it, and then if there's problems, then we get involved. Or you can simply recommend that we do not fund that portion, take that money out.
I'm sure what he's saying about the finance, the finance officers would be, that should be part of the budget process finance. Yeah. And it, and it really should.
And I would move that we do that one day this week or next week, as soon as we can, with the finance committee.
That probably should be part of the process with the budget, like John was speaking. We're going through the budget process, that.
Well, I mean, obviously for next year, but I still think there's, there's a tremendous amount of questions, you know, for this year. It wouldn't take us.
Yeah, but we've already passed the budget.
The budget's been passed, but it hasn't been explained, you know, how some of these expenses, what they were for. You get into legal expenses, land expenses, food expenses. Those things need to be explained.
Well, if they're coming, if they've set up separate accounts and the lawyer bill is being paid by their fundraising account, we don't have a dog in that fight. That's between them and their, their boards.
I think it falls back on the taxpayer. When you get thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars spent on legal fees that have nothing to do with fighting a fire, people want to know why, what that money was spent for. What, what could they, what equipment could they have bought with that money that was spent?
They are 501(c)(3)'s. Any person can walk in and question them. Ask them why they spent that money, and they've got to answer.
Well, I think the newspaper, according to their last article, didn't get any answers.
Then, then they go to the Department of Treasury and ask that their 501(c)(3) be revoked. Then they can pay taxes on it. But, you know, we're getting into micromanagement whenever we started getting into that. This is, they are corporations.
I think we're looking at money where they can spend it, not where they can't spend it. We need to know.
I'm only concerned with the fire tax money.
Oh, that, that's why I would like to ask those questions, how those fees were paid for. Did it come out of taxpayers' farm money?
How do we know which account that actually came out of? I mean, is my question.
Their accountant can keep those, they have those numbers separate.
Now they do.
They do now, but they didn't last year.
I'm sure that they didn't. I would like to know how they raised that money. What money was put up? What collateral was put up? Did they collateral, put up money, borrow money, and use fire trucks as collateral? What happens if they don't make those payments? What happens to the fire trucks?
Bank owns them.
The bank owns them. How do they fight a fire in that community?
That's not county business. That's between the board and that community.
Not with, not one using taxpayers' money.
Prove that they have used taxpayers' money. You are assinuating that you're using taxpayers' money.
No, I'm asking the question. That's why I think if it went through the finance committee, you could ask those questions and find out. If there's nothing wrong, there's nothing to hide.
And they have set up separate funds now, as of July the 1st. So whenever they write a check to the attorney, it should be coming out of their fundraising funds, not the fire tax funds. We did not stipulate that before this year. Now they've done it. We've got a means of correcting it.
I'm just looking away for accountability. The taxpayers, when we put this heavy tax on them, they expect to know how that money was spent, where it was spent. You know, I don't think going to McDonald's every time you turn around and buying $10 or $12 worth of hamburgers is a legitimate expense. And that adds up to thousands and thousands of dollars.
I would agree with that if that money came out of the fire tax proceeds. But if, but if that board said, we will pay for this, and it's going to come out of the money that we have raised, that is that board's decision. We have no influence over it.
I agree with that, but I want to know that it did come out of that money. If they raised enough money to pay for lawyer fees, to pay for mediation fees, then they had a lot of fundraisers. That should be easy to track. Piney Creek is easy to look at. What money came in, what money went out?
The 501(c)(3)'s, anyone can look at their books at any time.
We didn't have this two account in, in check till this May. It was announced at the fire commission meeting, we have two accounts. We didn't have that last year so far separating the two monies. And I'm all for accountability, but I'm just trying to state the fact that that rule was not implied for last year. Michael?
Just, I just, I understand what, what we're talking about and what we're trying to accomplish. But I think we started this discussion talking about what we would, you put into a listing of what the tax money can be spent for. No disrespect, but we've, we've talked about what we think it may not be spent for. So I'm just trying to bring us back around full circle. I think with some of Daniel's comments, I think we have a blueprint to start with by identifying some legitimate expenditures for that tax, that fire tax money. So if, if we could kind of build a base with that, that will give us the information to start disseminating with the fire commission on what we're looking at as true, you know, uses of that fire tax money. Certainly not trying to cut the discussion short, but trying to stay on tack with what we are authorizing that use for. So if we can back up, back to what Daniel's saying about heating. We talk about, I'm assuming, electrical. There are certain things that are components. So if we can devise a, a small-scale blueprint today, and then we'll arrange to have this joint meeting, or we'll arrange to have whichever direction you want to go in, if the finance committee upfront, whatever. But let's establish what we consider to be the baseline, and then allow for expansion on that. Is that fair enough?
That's fair enough.
Get back on track.
That's right.
So, Daniel, recap this. So, Daniel, recap us.
I'm sorry, I kind of got lost there. It would be my suggestion to first take what OSFM says is a basic requirement. There's your, there's your bottom of the barrel, got to start with that. Then we need to have a discussion about what does it actually take to run a fire department? The heat bill, truck maintenance, power bill.
Mortgage?
Mortgage on the building that you're occupied, if there is one. It's pretty hard to have a building if it, if the bank owns it. That's for you guys to decide. But all of those things, the turnout gear that has to be replaced every 10 years, you won't find that in that list. It just says you got to have turnout gear. Doesn't matter if it's brand new in the wrapper, if it's 10 years old, it's trash. There's some things there that we've got to figure out, and I don't know exactly what the extent of that would be. I mean, that list could be quite exhaustive. But we know what that baseline is. Just got to get my hands on it.
But we also know there are inspections that go along.
That's correct.
With, with these different apparatuses also. So any, any type of inspections, whether it be vehicle, firefighting equipment, what have you, I'm assuming that is a legitimate expenditure under the fire tax.
The hoses have got to be pressure tested yearly or every two years. That, to me, that is a legitimate expense.
That's right.
Changing oil. Changing out the tires every 10 years.
You could lump that, I guess, into, I don't know what you call it, apparatus maintenance? Equipment maintenance? I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, I think equipment maintenance would cover everything.
Include air packs as well?
Yeah.
Have to be pressure tested.
Right now I have heating, and I call it truck maintenance, but if there's a better definition, tell me. Turnout gear, inspections for the equipment used in firefighting. So I have four items. What else?
I would think training, wouldn't you need some money to go toward training? And I imagine that there's some baseline training that's required, and then there's probably some additional extra...
Most of, most of the training is provided to the fire departments at no cost.
Okay.
But that is basic in your house or, or one of your neighbor's houses, training. Now...
Call it concurrency training, so you maintain your...
Continue with education or whatever you have. Now, you know, as a member of the fire department, we always encourage everyone, hey, if you see a class and it's in Morganton and you want to take it, go take it, we'll pay for it. That would be the only real cost if someone wanted to travel and do some training, for the most part.
It's got to benefit the fire department.
That's right.
What about the, the fire building, the primary firehouse versus multiple buildings that you may own, or the fire departments may own?
I'd rather you guys make, I'm staying out of that one.
I mean, are you looking at a primary, is that what our schedule's going to be set around, a primary fire station or just firefighting in general?
Right now, it's primary because there are no other substations or any other facilities that I'm aware of.
Correct.
But I'm sure there's some, we have stipulated in the contract that they must work together to cover areas that are not covered right now. And if we come to an agreement sometime in the future, say Sparta and Piney Creek, and you build a substation, there's a mortgage on that substation, that should be included in there also. Because I don't, I don't foresee anybody giving them the land and writing a check to put the building up, to put in the equipment, the wells, the septic tank and things of this nature. So we might as well anticipate that instead of waiting until it faces us and modifying the document.
I think didn't, wasn't that discussed when we were looking at substation locations, about the ownership of a substation, if it's shared by two or three departments?
But I think before you, you put that into some document, at least for me, the understanding has to be, you know, if, if part of the plan is to increase the coverage into areas that are not currently covered, someone has to approve that location of where that substation may be to be able to include more parcels. What is the direction of that? Who has that approval?
According to the Office State Fire Marshal, they do the certification, but the bottom line is commissioners.
And that's what I was getting to, is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there are other components in that equation. But to my understanding, and Daniel can correct me, the decision of, to establish and where to establish falls amongst those five members right there.
That's correct.
So, and I don't know if the fire departments know that. I, I don't. But that is something certainly that needs to be in this discussion whenever it occurs to identify how this process works.
We want to set this, this discussion, how long would it take to get your list and whatever else you want to add?
Shouldn't take me terribly long, as long as I can get a hold of Jamie.
There's a fire commission meeting coming up this month.
Couple, couple more things on the list. I'm, I'm, you know, electrical, I mean, we talked about heating, electrical.
Repairs to the building, period.
Is, is there? I don't know. Is there, are they gas? I mean, do we have propane? Do we have, what, what, you know, that file's under heating, but what type of infrastructure costs are associated?
Well, if you want to get to that, we're going to have to have a work session, and it's going to have to be with our emergency operations plan, because what are your evacuation centers under the, uh, emergency operations plan?
School system.
School system. Does the school system, well, or fire departments? Let's say that we utilize a fire department as an evacuation center, because the school's full. Now we need generator backup, because if we lose power, we can't pump water into the volunteer fire departments, which means that we've got to rewire so that we can put a generator on them, so that we can flush the toilets and, and run water for people to drink and to do food. Whenever we started getting into this, it's going to look at it, 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 it could get really down into the weeds, because if that volunteer fire department is going to be an emergency evacuation center, this has got to be taken into consideration. Right now, how much food have we got at any evacuation center?
Whatever the cafeteria's got on hand.
Whatever the cafeteria's got on hand, yet there is shelf-stable for 25 years, dehydrated food out there that we could be stocking in these shelters and, and, and we would answer that question. Now, I remember whenever we had the flooding over here around the trailer park, you were running all over town trying to find someplace that would feed the people that had been evacuated up there. This is the things that we have got to look at right now. The logical place to go to is our volunteer fire departments, because of the size of the building, you can move the trucks outside, then you've got a large area where you can start putting people in cots up so that you could maintain them. But here again, if we lose power, you've got to have a generator so that you can get water into the building, you've got to have gas, because if you have electric, you're not going to be able to cook meals. You've got to have gas in there. That means that we are going to have to retrofit and upgrade a lot of these facilities, which means they will have to borrow money.
And one other item that I just had wrote down are your insurances.
Yeah.
I was getting there.
So, that, to me, is, is a given.
Insurance is a big, is a big part of their budgets.
So, I've, I've got six items now listed out as a blueprint. But I think it's important for the governing body to have a, a blanket to lay out to allow people to add to or take away from.
I agree.
Daniel, I don't know, have you, anything else you can think of?
Do you have a fuel line?
I put all that under maintenance.
I mean, I'm, I'm sure there'll be others, but as I start really, you know, sitting down and getting through it a little bit more.
Vehicle maintenance, you've got building maintenance.
And, and some of these things, I know, I know Commissioner Bobby Irwin, you know, he's, he's right. If you, if you look at some of it, you do wonder, but with an explanation, a lot of that wonder could go away. Because, you know, like it or not, food's a part of it. And, you know, with, with the declining membership in volunteers, you may have to look at alternative ways to encourage them to participate.
Bill and I, we also draw on the winter of '60. Bill, you remember. People couldn't get to town. We had helicopters dropping off food in people's, in front yards. They were dropping hay to the cattle because they were starving to death. This could happen again, and we are more reliant on that, that gone grid than we were back then. Back in 1960, it was amazing how many people still had outhouses, how many people heated by wood and cooked with wood. We don't have that today. We lose that electrical grid, we're in a whole different world real quick. And I will tell you this, EMP, electromagnetic, uh, coming off the sun, it just takes one, like 1859, this country will be out of electrical power for six months. And that is on the good side. And that was a natural phenomenon.
Are there any other items that, that you all can think of to include as permissible uses?
I'm sure there's many, and I just, I'll just wait for the fire chiefs. I think they can give us the best insight.
How do you want to proceed? Do you want the finance committee, or do you want the full board? I know we threw out both ideas. What, what do we want to do?
I think the overall discussion, Mr. Chairman, should be the full board, but whenever we started getting down to the real nitty gritty, the fine print, that should be the budget committee during the budget review process.
Budget committee, I agree. You think we should back up, let the finance do this thing for the past, basically the past year?
Yeah.
Kind of. Cause it's done been set in motion to set it forth this year with the two different accounts. So let's do the, is everybody in agreement to let the finance talk with the fire chiefs?
First?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then...
I think that answers...
I think it's a good start.
That is a budget, that should be a budget committee process, really.
I think that answers the lion's share of the question.
Everybody in agreement on that?
You set up some meetings this week and some next?
He's a one-man show this week. So...
But if I can, I, I know others that may help out in that situation. We'll, we'll figure something out.
But once we get that done, we set a, we set a meeting for the board and the, the fire commissions, that where we's going now to, to finish this up.
When is the fire commission meeting?
Fourth Tuesday, Thursday. Got it on the phone, yeah.
What you doing?
Fourth Tuesday, very good on that.
Tuesday, yeah. Cause this is the month, cause it, May was the last one.
So we're talking the 27th.
We could put that on the first of August work session then, couldn't we? Be awful close to it.
I believe so.
Would be the first meeting in August, Bobby.
Try to work out something on the finance committee maybe...
In between now and the fourth Tuesday. Are there, are there days better?
The 15th and 16th, I'm out. Those are the only two days.
14th, I got a doctor's appointment.
We've gone back to in-person meetings in Raleigh.
We, for the finance committee, do you want the fire chief and possibly the chairman of each board? Is that, is that the members you'd like to have in, or different setting?
I think that would be appropriate, Mr. Chairman.
I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
They should be able to answer the expenditures.
Certainly should. What are you going to do, that alphabetical order, or what's the process?
Nobody can get in trouble doing it alphabetically. So that's what we'll do.
Our first meeting in August is August the 2nd. So that work out pretty good timing right there for the work session. Any other comments on the fire tax before we move on here? Here and now, we'll move on down to the fire grounds.
Thank you, Daniel.
Chairman, I, I, I know that there's probably going to be some other members, I mean, hopes, let's put it that way, that there will be some other members. I know that we've tried to communicate, the first hour would be dedicated to the fire tax discussion. If possible, I would, I would ask that we at least have a seven-minute...
A recess.
...mission that allows some additional members from the TDA and the fire grounds to be available.
I'm good with that. Let's take a 10-minute recess. Order, work session meeting, and topic, next topic up is fairgrounds discussion. Who wants to...
Would you like for me to lead into that, Mr. Chairman?
Just go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I, I don't think it's any secret to anyone that we as the county want to, to see this fairground succeed. I know that several times, it's been referenced as one of our greatest assets, and now that we're coming out of the pandemic, hopefully, and other things are opening back up, it's time to, to really start looking at this. We had a, we had a year to contemplate, talk about, um, and I won't use Commissioner John Irwin's way of describing it, but, uh, some discuss. So, he's, he has coined that phrase, I only borrowed it for a minute. But, uh, I, I think it would be a good opportunity. I think we've talked about it, again, we did a lot of talking in the finance committee about some things, which is generating into these discussions. And today, in addition to our commissioners, we have some representatives from the TDA, and we have some representatives from the fairgrounds, uh, board. And, you know, I think it's time that we all come together, we all talked about what we'd like to see. I, I think direction is important for all of those interested and participating, and try to see how we can make, you know, what we've learned from the past, how we can improve in the future. So, with that in mind, um, if permissible, I'd like to start maybe with Steve, and let him kind of describe how the TDA could be a, could be a, an impact in this, and maybe hear from Aaron Reyes also, is, you know, and then, let's just have an open discussion about things. And if we need to set directions and understandings, and, you know, let's do that. But, a year and a half later, you know, I think communication has been, you know, the key contributor to some of the misunderstandings and this or that that's going on. So, let's, let's start today putting an end to that and working toward a common goal.
Well, thank you, Michael. I think that, I think one of the things that probably, um, is paramount in regards to what we're talking about today is, is really kind of, uh, creating a, a new path for what we're trying to accomplish. Um, and in doing that, I think, uh, the TDA position here, and really, um, in looking at where I think we have some opportunity to assist, is, is trying to do more, reach more than what we're currently doing, and being more aggressive about how we help pursue and, and, and help promote those events, um, of which will be, you know, created in, in the fairgrounds environment, but also with other events as well, but specifically talking about the fairgrounds, looking at ways that we can come alongside, uh, the fairgrounds committee, and look at the opportunities as an advisory board, uh, to the commissioners, and to help assist that advisory board, uh, in work and, and design a, a program that will work through, uh, the rec department with Cole, uh, that will have an impact on regards to how we focus and what we look at as we work on things going on in the future. Um, now, I realize that there is a lot of water that's running under the bridge, and, and there's a lot of things we could talk about today, about that had, was not maybe done in, in a, in a good way, or good fashion, or whatever that is, and whatever opinions those are. But at the, at the same token, our best advantage is to take a look at what we can do going forward. And, in, in essence, um, where I think, think, and I think it's coming from how we can help assist from the TDA standpoint, is looking at how we can address, uh, setting some goals and expectations from the county standpoint, um, and what the commissioners want to see happen, uh, and us try to help assist the fairgrounds committee, address those issues, and be able to handle that kind of situations, to, to look and, and address what needs to happen. Um, again, and I, I, I think the comment's been made several times in regards to what, what role, uh, the fairgrounds committee is, and what, what it's intended to be, and I think Aaron has, has addressed the issue that it's an advisory committee, and that's the way it should be. Um, and that's the way I think the commissioners want it to be. Uh, but having control of that facility from a county standpoint, also brings responsibility of what's expected. So if we get a good expectation of what's happening, what's going on, and what's, what's expected, then it's, then it's the role of the other groups that help with the fairgrounds to make that happen. And if those, those things don't happen, then by all means, it, it's a situation where changes can be made, and changes need to be made. But at the, at the, at, at best right now, for us to get engaged and us to get involved from a TDA standpoint, we're not in a position to take anything, any serious responsibilities. I think what we're in position to do is help come alongside and assist, and make things happen, and make events happen. Uh, we have the monetary ability to help do that, and we need to be able to help and assist in a better way than we're doing today. Um, I, I currently now sit on the fairgrounds board. Um, I, I addressed the board and asked if it would be beneficial to have someone from the TDA on the board, uh, and, and I, and I did that in a, in a way, not to be anything more than just to be able to assist and have a better connection, uh, with the fairgrounds committee. Um, and I think that's in a nutshell, that's kind of the, the mindset.
Aaron Reyes, I, I don't know, I know, you know, you, you've been involved in this for some time now.
Um, you know, I guess our biggest thing from, from the board's standpoint is, you know, we, we definitely, our main focus is trying to make improvements, um, to the fairgrounds as far as what we can do, um, but also being able to help, um, Cole in his capacity, because there's only one of him, versus a whole board, when we can try to leverage donations and do things that otherwise he wouldn't be able to do. Um, and I will say that it's, you know, since Cole's came on board, that the communication has probably been as good as it has been this year, for sure. So, you know, I think that's one of the biggest things, is, is between Cole and then, you know, with two commissioners sitting on that board, um, information should be available.
So, so I guess what I, I would, I guess throw out to start with, is I think there's, there's obviously a want, and, and I think there's a need to, and maybe this has occurred in the past, and if it has, it's time, and I'll move on to the next page, but if not, you know, from a commissioner's standpoint, you know, what, what are the expectations? What, what are the, the things that, you know, you as commissioners would like to see happen out there? Because here, here are two groups that want to help, and, and I don't want to speak for you, but I don't know how much guidance or direction over the years, you know, that... that, that's, that's happened. So looking at both of you, would that be helpful to know what the expectations or goals or thoughts are? So that, you know, we can all try to get on this bus and drive it in one direction? Is that, is that okay?
I mean, if we, if we don't have expectations, then what our expectations or our understanding of something is may be totally different.
And that may take, that may take some thinking and some, and some prodding in regards to what those, what those really are. Because it's easy to say, we want to see events and we want to see, you know, good, solid events. Well, that's, that's a, that's a statement, but it doesn't say too much. What we do need is a little bit of guidance in regards to what, what the do's and don'ts we want to stay away from and what we want to go towards. And if we have some guidance there, then I think reporting back to this, this group of people and, and working through the conduit of Cole, I think that, that gives us a great opportunity to do that. And, and I think we're able to assist with things that, that there's not a lot of resources for, but pool these resources, I think we can do a lot more. And be able to support from a standpoint, from a TDA standpoint, that we're not just waiting for events to come to us and try to help events, we're going out and making sure events are happening in, in that environment.
That to me is what's got to take place. And we've sat for a year, you know, and, and had to, but we're 30 days or 40 days into the lifting of the restrictions. And we've had one event, I mean, you're, you're at the point, you've got to have somebody that's ready to get up and move and go after these events and get them scheduled and make it work.
And I think that, that's, you know, I think that's the type of things that we're looking at is, what are those things that you want to see happen initially at the 30, 60, 90 day, six months from now? And, and we, we need to hit those targets and look at those type of things. This is not a process that's going to happen overnight. I mean, we didn't, we didn't get here from COVID to where we're at right now. We're not going to get out of it very quick. But there's events like the, the mudsling that's coming up and those type of things that are starting to happen that will start snowballing some activity and start looking at it. But that's a facility, at least in, in my mind, and I think, and it's in agreeance, I think with Aaron and, and as well, and Cole, that this is a, this is a facility that needs to be, at least if not every week, something going on, every other week, something going on. But there needs to be X amount of big events that are there every year, some stabilizing anchor events that are there every year. And some of those are there and some of them aren't, but some of them need to, you know, fall, spring, winter, every one of those events have something and then all those others that tie into it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One thing that I'm adamant about, we've got to figure out who is controlling that. And I'm going to give you a classic example. Anybody know Sarah Bittit? She's all over Facebook advertising for spaces for get off the interstate. She's got an application, $30 for spaces on the fairgrounds, $40 for inside the black building. Megan took deposits on spaces in 2019. Are you aware of that? She took deposits that rolled over into 2021. There are spaces that are spoken for, yet we have an individual that we don't even know who they are taking money for spaces. Is this the biggest problem we've got? Who do you go to with this fairgrounds? Somebody has got to take the sign that says the buck stops here and put it in front of them because who's scheduling?
I think to your point, John, I think the, the main thing that you're talking about right now is sitting right in front of you. And that's Cole. I said, but at the same token, Cole wasn't involved in that in 2019. So we've got to figure out a start point.
Yeah, but somebody, you know, we said that we were going to schedule events through the county. They went to Drew, Drew forwarded them to Aaron Ray. We can't pass a buck. Somebody's got to do a schedule so that we are not double scheduling here. And you know what really makes it bad on this? We had a scam six months ago for a rodeo up there at the fairgrounds. And they were looking for vendors. It didn't exist. They were taking people's money. Somebody has got to take control of this mess. Now, if it's going to be the fairgrounds committee, TDA, somebody has got to, we, the buck has got to stop somewhere.
No, I, I agree with you. And the thing about it is if things are set like they should be, then you make the recommendation and everything has to go through that department, then everything will go through that department. If it doesn't, then there's a problem. Okay? I, I agree with you. I don't disagree with you there. But at the same time, when you get on Facebook, the reality is there needs to be one point of reference of where things go to instead of people doing things all over the place.
Yeah.
And there's got to be, there's got to be a flow of, of information. And that's why we're here today. I mean, that's, we're here to make sure we get it right.
We're, we're here to start all new.
As far as scheduling goes, scheduling does come through me, part of the fairgrounds. As far as the road market goes, Aaron Ray took that early on because that was started before I came on board.
Right, and that is this year as the board reserved it versus the county because it wasn't anybody.
Then it needs to be out there somewhere that the fairgrounds committee is going to be doing the reservations so that people know where they are. Because right now, they don't know if they come to you because this is the way it's been done in the past. Yet we've got someone out there on Facebook saying, hey, Allegheny Fairgrounds Inc. is responsible for assignments of these lots. Have they coordinated with you in case there are spaces that have already been reserved? Because whenever I was with Megan and she was taking the checks, the first year, they booked it for the next year and paid for it and they said, this is where we want to be.
Aaron Ray has those reservations.
Right.
Everybody, everybody was refunded to my notice except for just a couple. And those have been 42.
And that needs to be, that needs to be out there because whenever I see this, and I got this this morning, I became concerned. Now, if she had placed in here that Allegheny Fairgrounds Inc. is taking the reservations and that those reservations that were made previously will be honored or something like that so that we know what's going on. The public doesn't know what's going on. God, we're, we're commissioners, we own the deck on property, we don't even know what's going on.
Here's what I would suggest to you. I would suggest that, that we recognize how the flow of information is going to go and give that recommendation to the board and for approval in regards to how that flow is or make adjustments to what that looks like. I think that that flow can be addressed between myself, these three individuals right here and presented back to you guys to review it. There's going to be history of things that are in the past and we're going to have to clean up. I mean, there's no doubt.
There's got to be what we refer to in the military as an SOP. You submit your request to Parks and Recreation. We've got the forms right there and it's got to be followed down. And whenever things have got to be modified, we'll modify them at the board of commissioners. Right now, are you aware that it takes 90 day notice before you can put a concession stand out there? Health department must be notified 90 days in advance so that they can set up their schedule for the inspection of any vendor that goes into that fairgrounds. And guess what? If you've got concessionaires that are coming in for this mud bog, the health department's liable to come in and shut you down.
I've been in contact with the health department and they haven't voiced that.
That was one of the big things whenever I was on the board with contention because they were not given enough time to arrange for the inspection. And invariably, it's over the weekend, so they wanted 60 to 90 days advanced warning so that they could set up their schedule. There's so much more that is involved with this and you cannot spread it out. It's got to be centralized. And maybe not with Cole. Maybe there's another person that comes under him that would, would take it. And however, this board wants to do it, well and good, but for God's sakes, we cannot, we have got to have a standard of how we are going to set up the schedule. We need to have a calendar out there so that the public can go to it and make their plans and you know that we're not going to be booked, double booking. And that means there's going to be a dictator. And if it's going to be at your lap, you've got to be the dictator.
And if I may, I, I don't, I don't think anybody disagrees with that. What, what I would say is I don't know to what degree in the past that ever happened. Because if there was an SOP in place three years ago, what happened to it? So I think we can all learn from this. I think that's what we need to do. We, we can, certainly the past is important from a historical standpoint, but I would rather cut it and move forward because that's how we.
This is, this is the way that it's got to be, but this, all of a sudden, somebody's doing something. We don't know what in the world's coming off. That, that can't be. I mean, let's face it, the buck stops right here at the board. We're the final authority and if we don't know what's going on, what's the public think?
Hopefully, hopefully they'll, they'll learn today as we learn.
Yeah.
Is there any kind of calendar online or anything? Do you have a webpage for the rec department or?
I mean, there's a website on the county page, the rec department. And I mean, we could most certainly have our. Now I have a calendar that schedules these.
I think if you, if you, if y'all will address a few points of reference in regards to some of those things that are key points, and you would give us those key points of reference and allow us to have a little bit of time to address those issues, formulate a game plan and present that plan back to you in regards to acceptance or alterations or looking at those issues. And then be able to make comments to that so that you can say, hey, what if we do this or what if we add that? That, that will be, you know, that will give us some working capabilities to do it and we'll work with Michael to do that and present that back to you at a certain set time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
What I look at the TDA is going out and looking for events. Promoting the events because that comes under your charter. That is the money that you can use. Now, what we don't realize around here, but the, the festival, the music festival in Wilkes County, that's run by the TDA. Christmas in July, Ash County, TDA runs that. We've depended on people to go out and, and bring in Music on Main and everything else. TDA can do that. And we can, we can look to you as a promoter. You've got the money to promote it. That is the money from the tax that's coming in. That is why it's going to be done.
It is, and you are correct.
And once you've done that, he can schedule.
That is correct, but I will say as to your point, and that's where we're gravitating towards. Because as, as I've viewed back and taken a look at the history of our TDA structure, it has been more to support events than it has to been to promote events. And we're making a step. So allow us to make that step and start doing what we're intended to do. And that's part of our role and I get that. And, but at the same time, it's not our, it's not our position to run events as much as it is to promote the event.
I agree.
There's a difference between the two. And that's, that's what we want to try to engage in and do. And I think our board is very intended to want to do that as well.
Now, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
We have a request from one of the volunteer fire departments that has an event. They want us to approve seed money so that they can put out advertisement. To me, that's where you fall in.
Yeah, it is. Now, again, it gravitates to the, the, the component, and the key component is, is putting heads in beds. Okay? And that's, that is a key component. Now, it can be secondary, it can be a portion of that, but that's where it's got to be, it's got to initiate from. And that's what we're trying to accomplish. But if those events have connectivity to do that, then we can do that.
So the volunteer fire department should be coming to you with events?
It does.
So that you can advise, and then the fairgrounds committee can advise you the events that may present a public hazard?
Exactly. And that's where the connectivity, I think, and the ebb and flow is, is where that has connection. And that's what we need to be doing.
Once the decision's made, it goes to Cole?
It should go to Cole.
It goes to the schedule and that's it.
Yeah, and that's good. It puts in the county's position of where, when those events are going to be held.
Bobby?
You know, we, we've talked about moving forward, but we learn from history.
Sure.
It's been six and a half years that I've been working on this and Mark, he's not here. Nothing's changed in six and a half years, except I think that it's gotten worse than it has gotten better as to the usage. That venue is the largest venue the county has. And, you know, taking in the weather and everything, I, I would like to see 25 or 30, maybe 35 events or more. I think that's where you come in, TDA, with the promotion. And that's, I think that's what you're selling is the promotion end of it. I look at the recreation department as the scheduling, as to seeing, to all the minor details, you know, trash cans, lights, turning the water on, being sure everything's clean, being sure it's cleaned up afterwards. But I also look at, in my mind, an advisory board of the TDA, of the fairgrounds committee, of the county government, being the say so, being the mediator with the county manager being basically the final say. If that's not approved, then it comes to the commissioners. We, you know, we're not in the micromanaging business. I think that's what Cole is. I think that's what you are. I envision one board. I don't envision the fairgrounds board. I don't envision TDA. I don't envision the commissioners having three boards. I see one board as coming together to run that facility to where really, in the long run, it starts making money for the people of Allegheny County.
Well, there's no doubt that the, the facility should be, should be in a position to make money. I know that's an asset for the county. The one, the one challenge is, is making sure that as we melt all and blend all this together, that, that we're all taking roles that we need to be taking and not stepping across boundaries. And, and that's where I think if we have conversations and we put things together and we figure out where that is and where the crossovers are and where the separation is, because there's some separation points too. And we need to figure out where those are at and we need to present that back in your, in your court. Now, I'm all for Mr. Carter being engaged with what's going on. And I think he's the conduit for, for y'all as far as information and source. As long as you feel comfortable with that, there's no reason why we can't, we can't come together, put this together and have that addressed to you in a fashion that would be in a, in a presenting fashion that, that you see, is this workable or is this something that we need to address in a different fashion? But I think until we give you that, that, that look and you give us some expectations off of that look, then we're not going to know where we're at.
I think that the expectations, if you're going to put that on the board, that's what we've hired Cole for. That's what we're interested in the TDA for, is promotion, is going out and finding people that want to use the facility. You've got to sell yourself. We've got to sell Allegheny County. Those people just don't come knocking on your door saying, I want a rodeo.
I agree with what you're saying, but one thing I know for a fact is if we're going to do that and we're going to be in that position to do that, we've got to have the support of people sitting behind this desk. Because if we don't have the support from this group right here, we might as well just walk out the door right now. Because at the end of the day, we've got to have the support that we're going to be, we're going to do the right things. We're going to make the right decisions.
The support comes from the commissioners. We've supported the fairgrounds, I can only speak for the last six and a half years, with a tremendous amount of money to keep that place up. a tremendous amount of money to keep that place up. Now, this proposal that's coming from you, Fairgrounds, from Cole, from the county manager, I think that's a very interesting, you know, I think it's the correct way to be going. Like John mentioned, you've got Merle Fest, you've got the Christmas in Ash County. Those are things that we should be promoting, stuff like that.
Absolutely. And I think that's your direction. Not that we haven't had those type of events, but there have got to be events that are stable, that are anchors, that have three or four of those events a year that have everything else wrapped around it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, you know, you're correct. But I look at you and this board, at the TDA. I'm looking for someone that says, okay, we had a mudsling last month. It's a little bit too quick for a mudsling this month. You've got to be that arbitrator. You've got to look at filling those campsites up there because we've put a lot of money in there. We'd like to see them utilized. It's an asset, and this is where we're looking at you to bring people together. Instead of, and please correct me if my vision is wrong, a volunteer fire department coming to Cole and saying, we want a mudsling, they should be coming to you. Once you have looked at it, discussed it with the Fairgrounds Committee, and you agree that that should go on the schedule, you advise Cole that it's going on the schedule. And that way, we can take care of the maintenance items, the things that he needs to do, like turning on the internet. We don't want to leave the internet on all the time so that somebody can sit up there and watch porn in the daggone parking lot, but somebody has got to know when to turn it on and off.
And to your point there, I mean, I agree there, but there's a lot of issues about going on and off. The reality is, a facility should be going, having an event so frequent, it shouldn't have to worry about who's up there sitting in the car, you doing that. There should be events from week to week to week that are going on.
And that would be my wish and dream, or we may have to keep it on because we've got the campsites full all the time. That'd be great.
To your point, here's the pivotal point, is it's an educational process in regards to how we educate the population about how they're addressing events. Because right now, what they know, they know to go to the Fairgrounds Committee and pursue an event because that's who's working with the Fairgrounds. What needs to happen is us coordinating what we're doing, and our effort should be, when that person comes to an event, wanting to put on an event, is we need to try to assist in having that, helping them through the TDA and coordinating that with what's going on with the Fairgrounds. It's a coordination between all of it. Cole's a one-man operation right now. There's a possibility of, as things develop, as we produce more at the facility, produce more income, then we can hire personnel to take care of some of these things and scheduling everything else. But I think at the end of the day, we've got to start small and work out, try to figure out how we coordinate all this and give you that in a nutshell.
So if he takes a request for an event, you would recommend that it be channeled to the TDA so that you can look at it, see if you're going to promote it?
Well, what I would recommend, if it went to either source here right now, whether that's to Cole through the Recreation Department or whether it's to Aaron in the committee, it would be a situation where have you pursued funding or assistance to have this event? If it is, then it's going to the TDA because it's going to come right before us. We're meeting monthly, so there's no reason why we can't address those issues and support those events. I think a lot of this would be answered with an SOP. And that's exactly right, you know? But I think there needs to be, you know, we've talked about it and Cole's brought it up and Mr. Carter's brought it up, some standardized forms that have some impact in regards to follow-up, what happens after an event, what they're responsible for, all those type of things have more impact on the next event, the next event, the next event. I mean, you can't have a horse show out there and then have an issue where you've got a problem or having an issue where you have your next event because they should be supporting the cleanup operation as well as having the facility for the event.
All this is for you guys to figure out, in a way.
Well, and that's fine. If that's your appetite as the Commissioners, we can get together and create a path and then for your acceptance.
Is there a question?
I'm just, I don't know if I've heard John right, but my impression, when Cole was hired, that he would be scheduling who uses the Fairgrounds and other facilities that the county owns, not the Fairgrounds Committee. That would fall under Cole's jurisdiction or responsibilities, whatever you want to call it.
But during that interim, someone had to do it.
I understand the interim part. I'm saying, going forward, if Joe Blow wants to hold an event up there, he goes to the Recreation Director.
And that's the way it is now. I mean, that's the way it is now.
Well, John, I thought he mentioned the Fairgrounds Committee.
I did mention it. I was changing that, but this is where they need to come up with an SOP, saying this is the way it's going to be.
Talk about the committee itself and the Fairgrounds Committee as an advisory board. I think that is an asset to Cole in regards to what he has to do out there to that Fairgrounds at this set point in time. And as we develop and we work with this and we look at it, then we'll have a better understanding of how that's going to flow.
Well, you are correct because the corporate knowledge resides in the Fairgrounds Committee. The little things that Cole is not aware of right now, such as, we're going to have a horse show, we need sawdust in the stables, we need to repair the stables, things of this nature, that's where the Fairgrounds Committee can come in and say, look, you need to be aware of this. These are the things that we don't normally think of, and that way, working together towards a common goal, we're going to get somewhere. Right now, people doing their own thing at three different levels is simply not going to work.
Mr. Carter.
Just to go back to the SOP, again, I say, that is my understanding, and these guys can correct me. There's probably been an assumption the whole time of what needs to happen, pre, during, and post. Well, you know, transition has proven that that assumption process is not fail-proof. Maybe the first task ought to be establishing those SOPs, and then, once they're established, then we get back, and this gives the Board of Commissioners time to think about, as Steve mentioned early on, you know, what type of direction. You can say it, but let's think about it and get it. So I agree, the first step ought to be to take everything out of everyone's mind that's been there for however long a period of time, put it in a writ form and establish it.
Mr. Chairman, I would tell everyone, this is not going to be overnight. This is going to take time. There's going to be bumps in the road, there's going to be ripples, and it may even be a flood or two. But if we do not do this, we are going to lose that daggone Fairgrounds because we simply cannot continue throwing good money after bad at it.
Well, me and Michelle sort of sat here and listened a lot. Go ahead, if you want to express.
Well, you know, we've talked a lot about micromanaging tonight and how we don't want to do that, and you all are a bunch of smart people, and I think that you all should get together and come up with a procedure and then bring it back to us because you know more than anyone what needs to go on out there. So that's just my thoughts about it.
Good thoughts.
Well, I agree with that. My perception, you've got the county, you've got the Recs, Cole's sitting here, and you've got Aaron Ray with the Extension Service and the Fairgrounds Committee out there, and you've got Steve with the TDA. That's a good combination to move this thing down the road and get off our butts and let's get it settled and move it on. We need to be having events and things need to be organized, and I agree with Michelle, you three guys, all this stuff, you all need to sit down around a big table one day and work it out, along with Mr. Carter in the mix. I'd like to see him in that role also and move this thing along. It's all good. You guys can help with advertising, I understand that, and the Fairgrounds Committee is there with their background, their knowledge, and Cole and you, Rec Department, we'll be working very closely with the Fairgrounds. And let's move this thing and get it organized and get it rolling and move on to something else. If Mr. Carter would agree to be on board with all of it, I think that'd be a good combination for you four gentlemen.
You know, and I think from the standpoint of where we're coming from in these different roles, you know, I sit in a position that is appointed by the Commissioners. I'm invested in this county and I want to be a part of this county and make it work. So that's why I do what I do. Aaron's doing the same thing. This is volunteer time. This is time that's not spent. And I realize Cole is, but I guarantee you, he's going to put a lot of hours in this program and these things that have nothing to do with what he makes. So we want to invest in the community and do it the right way. The TDA support that has been for events and functions that have happened there, we've just scratched the surface, I think, of what we can do to help support that environment. And now, we've done several events out there and we can name several. I mean, Fiber Fest and Rodeo, different things have happened because those individuals have known to come to the TDA to ask for funds. What we're going to try to make sure is people know that there's funds available so they can come get it and support it and advertise and do the things we need to do to help support those events.
Joe. Sounds good, sounds good. Anybody have anything else they want to add? We're going to have to roll on here. Six o'clock is coming. Michael?
When are we going to get started? When's going to be the next meeting? You know, this is six months already gone, and, you know, I'm afraid most of the year is gone.
To your point, Bobby, here's what I'd say. Today is day one. Today is day one. We can't do anything about six months, can't do anything about six years, but right now is today's one. Now, if this is not getting too bold, can we have something to these individuals back within 45 days?
I would welcome...
I'm just saying, 45 days or maybe sooner.
I would welcome a first draft in 45 days.
If it's sooner, it's sooner.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
If it's sooner, it's sooner.
Sooner, sooner. We'll get it to you as soon as we can get to you, but we'll have it about 45 days.
I mean, you guys have all got to sit down and...
I don't want to contradict anything, but I'd push it for 30 instead of 45 because we're going to be in August.
Well, I totally agree. I just, you know, try to be consistent at the time. For being realistic, I mean, I don't know how many events we're going to get added on this year.
Not to be...
I think we've got to create a foundation that's rock solid and be prepared for 2022.
That's what I'm saying. This year is basically gone.
We're not drifting, but we're trying to set the framework for next year.
I'm looking for a firm foundation for 2022. I want it rocking, I hope that we are rocking and rolling in the summer of 2022.
In a 30-day window, that gives you a 30-day put-together that gives a ample time for review. If it takes a month to work it out, you're into late October, you're going to pull it out in November and you'll roll that thing out for the first of the year when events may start picking up.
And that's not going to keep from anybody here addressing issues that can happen out there as we go along. We're going to try to do everything we can to try to make all that happen, but to be prepared for next year.
Well, also, it gives us an opportunity, like now, we're going to vote on the RFP tonight. You've got to bring out, you've got to tell us what you need out there, and we'll work it through, we'll find a way around it, we'll get it done. Thank you for your candor.
Appreciate y'all coming out in all participation.
I want to thank you all for your time. I know that you put a lot of time into these committees, so thank you for that.
Appreciate everything I love you do. Been progress made here today.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a recommendation of a 10-minute break for the dispensment and replenishment of bodily fluids.
Sounds good.
Eight minutes.
We've got eight minutes to do it.
Eight minutes, excuse me.
Okay.
Maybe this is a short meeting.